So why don't we go ahead and get started? Everybody's here. Oh, I will go ahead and call the Temple City City Council Regular Meeting to Order November 4th, 2020. I will start by reading our little caption that is pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020. Cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. So with that, I will ask our Madam Clerk to please do roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Thank you. All right. Just a reminder, for those who are calling in, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment. And when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templecity.us. You should do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. So we will begin with our invocation, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Sternquist if she'll provide a invocation for us this evening. So Timothy, it's all yours.
Bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you that you hear and answer our prayers. Hear our prayer and be in the midst of our meeting today. We ask that your presence calms the troubled sea of life and speaks peace to our souls. Give us clear minds and peaceful hearts as we gather here together. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We need that now more than ever, don't we? So why don't we go ahead and start with our Pledge of Allegiance? So we've got the flag there on the screen. So if everyone will please stand, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the religion for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to our next item, which is our ceremonial matters. We don't have any tonight, I don't believe. Correct? I don't see anything on there. So we will now move on to our public comments on items not listed on the agenda. City Council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I'll begin by asking our city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, there are no requests to speak, Mayor.
Thank you. And is there anyone on the line who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comments. And we will now move on to item number seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion, as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Before I take roll call, are there any email requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
Okay. And if there's anyone on the line listening in, if you'd like to speak up regarding the consent calendar, now would be the time to do so.
There are no public callers.
Okay, hearing none. So closed public comment on that. We have a motion in a second. If we could have roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, we will now move on to... My notes here in front of me. Now move on to our public hearing, item number eight. Our first item is the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 20-1049, Pool Maintenance for the Reduction of Mosquito Breeding. And Brian, who's going to be presenting that this evening?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and member of the council. This is being brought to you again with some additional information that you were looking for. The presentation will be given by now. Our Community Development Director, Scott Reimers.
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Reimers.
All right, yes, good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Can.
Perfect. So at our last meeting on October 20th, the city council requested staff to return with some information about how the partnership would work between the Vector Control District and to bring you back some additional information about the citation amounts that were in the proposed ordinance and also being proposed by the Vector Control District. So we'd like to go over some of that information with you tonight. We spoke with Mr. Jared Dever, who is available if you have questions. He's the district manager for the Vector Control District. And we talked about the process that would be used. The Vector Control District would basically be on the front end of the process where they would... Oh, sorry, it looks like I'm jumping ahead. Sorry. One of the concerns that they had with their existing process is that their only authority at this point is an abatement authority, which means that they actually can physically go in and abate and remove a problem. It takes a lot of months. It takes a lot of time. It's a very costly process. So that's why the Vector Control District has reached out to other jurisdictions to try and use the citation process. So in this case, the Vector Control District would go through and look for unmaintained swimming pools, and once identified, would notify the owners. The city would get involved if the district was having trouble with the owner, either getting ahold of the owner or having the owner abate the problem. So with these unresponsive owners, the cities would get involved. We would let them know that we have the ability to cite, and if necessary, we would then have to cite people who were not in compliance. If the citation process did not work, then the Vector Control District would then go out and obtain a warrant, as they currently do, and then they would abate the issue. So in regard to the citations, we wanted to offer you another option beyond what we had presented at the last meeting. And so just as a reminder, the district's proposal was a citation that began at the first citation was 500, then stepped up to 1,000, and then the third citation would be 1,500. That's more than our existing citations amount, which is 100, 200, and 500. We wanted to offer you tonight another hybrid approach, which would be to start low at that $100 citation, and then move up to 500, and then end with a third citation at $1,000. We did talk to the Vector Control District and asked them, you know, what kind of their rationale and thinking was in regards to the citations. And they did say that they would be supportive of any citation amount that the council would deem effective. And to help you gain some additional knowledge about, you know, how often we use citations in community preservation and how effective they are, we have found that the existing citation amounts in Temple City tend to be very effective. Right now, only about 1% of code enforcement cases really require us to do a citation at all. And then 80% of the cases, when we do have to write a citation, only 80% of those cases, or 20% of those cases, require a second citation, sorry. And then this year, we haven't even issued a third citation. So it is very rare for us to issue that third citation. And under our existing code, we do have the ability to keep writing citations every single day until that issue has been abated. And so those cases do rack up citations amounts pretty quickly. After additional research, we've also found that fines that are more than $1,000 are required to be classified as a misdemeanor and not as an infraction. So if we wanted to have a fee of $1,000 or more, we would need to have additional recitals in the ordinance. And then we would also want to modify the ordinance just to make sure that the appeal rights were really clear for people. So if the city council wanted to adopt the proposal tonight, we would need to return with a revised fee and fine schedule. We would need to return with a revised ordinance, and we would need to do first reading of that ordinance at your next meeting, which I think is November 17th. So I apologize for that. If the city council wanted to adopt that hybrid approach that I provided earlier in the presentation, those changes are small, and those could be read into the record tonight. And then we could return with the changes to the fee and fine schedule at the second reading, which would be in two weeks or on November 17th. With that, we're still recommending the ordinance be adopted at the existing public nuisance citation amounts, which we believe are very effective. And then to schedule the second reading of the ordinance for November 17th. I just wanted to let you know as well that we have contacted some of the other jurisdictions in the San Gabriel Valley. And the citation amounts in Monrovia are already higher, but they have not adopted the Vector Control District's ordinance. I've also heard from San Dimas recently, just this evening. Their ordinance is in process, but they're expecting to use citation amounts similar to we have 100, 200, and 500. Just to give you some knowledge about what else is happening out there. So if you have any questions, I'm available, and so is Mr. Dever, the district manager from the Vector Control District.
Hey, thank you very much for that report. And thank you, Mr. Dever, for attending this evening, taking some time out of your busy schedule. And of course, thank you for your work with the Vector Control District. We will begin by going around the table, asking if there are any council questions. I'll go ahead and ask Councilmember Mann first if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. Just one question. In the slide where you had said only 1% of our... Was it 1% of code enforcement? Oh, there it is. 1% of code enforcement requires a citation. I guess out of all the citations we have, how many of them are actually related to the pool issue that we're talking about?
Sure. This year, we haven't issued any citations for swimming pools, unmaintained swimming pools. We've only had two code enforcement cases related to maintained swimming pools, unmaintained swimming pools.
Okay. And just generally speaking, is that a representative number of a typical year for us?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
Just one question, Scott. And good evening, Jared. How are you?
Good evening.
Just the one question regarding, I know for the... We were planning on doing a first notice and then a first, second, and third possible citation. Do we do notices first, just asking for compliance with the other citations?
Yeah, yes. Our typical process is to give two warnings, and after the two warnings, then a citation is issued. In this case, since they've already received a warning from the district, we would only give them one warning, and then we would move straight to the citation process.
That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, we're talking swimming pools, but would this apply to like a koi pond that's been unused and attracting mosquitoes or some other body of water, or is it just pools?
This ordinance focuses specifically on swimming pools, because that's where the Vector Control District is really focusing on. However, and they're really being proactive on that end in using aerial photography and assigning staff to follow up on these cases. However, if we do get notice from the district or from other people in the community that there are koi ponds or other bodies of water that are harboring mosquitoes, we will let Vector Control District know, and we also have things in our existing public nuisance section that handle that.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Yu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Just as a follow-up to Councilmember Viscar, it came to my mind that I know in the past, Councilmember Sternquist has done a good job of letting us know what the latest is and what things we need to look out for, such things as water pooling, even in the garden. And, you know, we know that even a cap full of water can maintain mosquitoes, and they can breed in that as well. And so kind of as a follow-up, I know, Mr. Reimers, you mentioned that we have other ordinances that may address that issue. And so are... My concern is that, you know, by adopting this one specifically for pools, it don't seem to really be a problem in Temple City. Is that going to be inconsistent with how we deal with these other water issues? And what are the fines for those violations?
So it will kind of depend on what the council does tonight. So if the council ends up adopting a citation standard for unmaintained swimming pools that are different, then we would potentially have two different sets of citations, one if the mosquitoes are breeding in a pool, and one if they're breeding in a pond. But under the recommendation that you have before you tonight, they would all be, have the same consistent citation process. I'm sorry, same citation amounts.
Okay, so if we adopt, what we adopt, well, that's only if we adopt the existing citation amount, which is 100, 300, and 500.
Correct.
Then they would be the same. But if we don't, then it's going to be a different amount for pools than it would be for, as Councilmember Viscar mentioned, a koi pond or just even letting your sprinklers run and having water in your garden pooling for days and days. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is Greg Murphy. I do just want to mention that the definition of pool for purposes of this ordinance does include ornamental ponds, fountains, bird baths, and other man-made structures. So in the question you've just asked, letting a sprinkler run, not a man-made structure, but the koi pond obviously is a man-made structure. So pool does capture those other, those other structures.
Yeah, I see. It includes hot tubs and bird baths and anything else. But it doesn't cover the, that's only for man-made structures. It doesn't cover the gardens.
Correct.
All right. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, Scott, in between like the notification from the district and then the first notification, and if we have to go to a second notification, is there a specific amount of time, like 30 days? And then the second citation, it's a shorter period of time? What's, how much time do we give them before they can get to the maximum, if they're just not complying?
The, for due process reasons, we have to give the property owner sufficient time to receive the notice and to abate the issue. Typically, for public health issues like that, like this, it would be probably 72 hours. At the longest, it would be five days. It would kind of depend on whether, if the property owner's local, we could post the notice on site, and then we could give them 72 hours. If we have to send a notice in the mail and make sure that it's sent with a receipt, then we would give it a little bit more time, probably five days. But typically, it would be around three to five days.
Great. So it's a pretty quick turnaround.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it, Tom. Oh, you're on mute, Tom. Tom?
I was letting my grandfather's clock finish chiming, otherwise... It's a new world out there, you know? I mean, what can I tell you? So, okay. Thank you for that brief pause. All right. So why don't we go ahead and open up the public hearing? I'm going to ask the city clerk if we have any public comment emails on this matter?
No com, no emails, Mayor.
Okay. Do we have anybody on the line?
No, no callers.
No callers. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing on this. And we will go ahead and follow up with any final council questions and/or comments. And why don't we go in reverse order this time, and we'll start with Mayor Protam Yu.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for bringing this issue up. It's very interesting. And thank you for the Vector Control folks for keeping us safe out there. But, and thank you for, Mr. Reimer, for your report. It seems to me like that we, this is not a big issue in Temple City. And based on the track record that you have reported back, I thought that adopting ordinance is great, but I think the current citation amount should be sufficient, unless down the road we see something different. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscar, any final comments?
No. And I'm good with the, the fine system that was suggested.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
No questions.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Mann?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to Mr. Reimers for that report. I think with the data that he's provided to council, I guess in short, I would be perfectly fine with following staff's recommendation. If it becomes more of a serious issue, that seems like something we can revisit and revise if necessary. Not to bring a separate issue into it, but I know we've talked about fireworks fines and all that in the past. But, you know, if staff can keep us kind of aware of the data in the coming years to see if this grows into a problem, then I most definitely should revisit. But otherwise, what staff's recommended is fine with me.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, you know, I know that last time we were speaking about this, my concern was, you know, and we kind of analogize it to the, to the firework and issue. And that was, you know, we have to, if we see a problem and it's an issue, we may want to consider raising the fines to get their attention. Based on the information that's been provided to us, it doesn't, as most of you have already said, it doesn't appear to be a problem in our city at this point. I guess, the way I understand, maybe a real quick question. So is, the way I understand the report, though, is that Vector Control will do some of the investigation work? And if they identify a property that may look like it's a problem, they will then contact the city, who will then do, take out the efforts to enforce. Is that correct? Is that the plan?
Yes. Vector Control will do the investigation, and they will make first contact. If they need assistance, then they will contact the city. We'll open a code enforcement case, and then we'll help with those owners that Vector Control feels are unresponsive.
Yeah, because it would seem to me that it would be very difficult for our city code enforcement people to identify these issues unless they start climbing fences or things. And obviously, we will just be responding maybe to neighbors' complaints or things like that. But so far, like I said, it doesn't seem to be a major problem. Although it does, it does raise a serious issue, and that is, you know, the West Nile virus is out there, and that's why they've identified this issue. And people can and do die from these kind of things. And so obviously, we need to take it seriously. But I would agree, I think, with fellow council members that this time, you know, if it does become an issue, then we can always take a look at it at some other time. But it seems that we're being a little bit more proactive and together with our partnership with Vector Control, usually that should take care of most of the problem. So at this time, I will then go ahead and entertain a motion, unless someone else has anything to add. Anybody like to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, sure. Mayor Chavez, I'll move to introduce for first reading by title only and wait for the reading of ordinance number 20-1049, Pool Maintenance for Vector Control, and to schedule the second reading of ordinance for November 17th, 2020.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. If there's no objection, I will ask city clerk for roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could please read the ordinance title?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 20-1049, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Temple City, amending Title IV Law Enforcement, Chapter 2, Nuisance of the Temple City Municipal Code to Add a New Section J, Pool Maintenance for the Reduction of Mosquito Breeding.
Hey, thank you very much. And again, Mr. Dever, thank you for attending this evening, and thank you for all your help in this area. And look forward to working with you, and hopefully, this does not become a problem. But if it does, it sounds like you guys are taking an active approach to it. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item number nine, unfinished business. There is none. We will now move to number 10, our new business. Our first matter is an overview of temporary emergency action related to continuity of city services and personnel and request for direction. So, Mr. City Manager, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Before we tonight, the authorization of tool that is...
Breaking up on his brain.
...in providing a continuity of service to the...
We're losing you, Brian. We're losing you, Brian.
Did I just?
Yeah, maybe.
Sorry, let me, apologies. Let me get everybody off.
Maybe everybody can go on mute. That way... All those trees in your area can't get through.
Is that better?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Hey, we're ahead of schedule, so no problems. Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yeah, much better.
Sorry about that, Mayor and council. I'm blaming the city of Pasadena for all this. Sorry, let me, let me take a minute to...
They also, they also may have a new mayor as well, I understand. Yes. Okay, take your time, Brian. We're with you.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm just, see what I can do here. Can you hear me now? No. Okay. I'm sorry, I'll need one minute.
I was going to suggest to him to maybe turn off his video stream temporarily, because usually that takes up a lot of bandwidth. If it's just audio only, it might not be as big of a problem.
Very true.
Or he ain't calling like me.
The, the response is pretty spot evens.
Yeah, well, where is it?
Love that mug, nice mug.
Okay, can I see that mug again? You're on mute. That's a great mug. And ironically, she is on mute.
She's trying to demonstrate.
I'm gonna get all of you one of those from Foothill. Fernando already has one. But they're gonna give them to you.
See if we can get Brian to reconnect here. Here we go.
He's on mute.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry about that, Mayor and Council. Uh, where was I? Before, uh, before I was rudely interrupted by the internet, um, the, uh, item before you tonight is, uh, as you've seen before, is asking for the ability, uh, to use admin leave for non-work time through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. This has really been a tool that has allowed us to provide a continuity of service to the community. Allowed us to do staggered scheduling, allowed us to have occupancy at levels that make sense for the safety of both the staff, but also the community members who are coming in for appointments to city facilities. Um, it has actually allowed us during other emergencies, that we've had emergencies within emergencies as well, with fires and unhealthful air and other things as well, which have allowed us that ability. So to put it in some context as well, so that the, the, that you, as, as you well know in our last report, but also for the community as well, this is not a financially burdensome, uh, program. Admin leave, since the pandemic started, since the stay-at-home order has started, only represents six percent of our gross total payroll costs. So you see the numbers that we provide you with every two months, but that is a very small amount. And on average, if you took every single employee, it's about two-point hour, two-point-nine hours per week, per, for, per employee, averaging about four thousand dollars a year. So this is not a financially burdensome, uh, uh, program. The Audit Committee, which will be, is talked to the auditor recently as well, we'll, we'll see that, how that is represented in our financial statements. But these are costs that we are able to bear, but also the cost that we're not shelling out as additional allocations of funding. But what is represented in terms of the liabilities that we increase over time with leave. It's been a program that's been effective. It is not a cost burdensome program. It is not a program where we're just allowing people to not work. It is allowing us to schedule time and, um, and for staggered scheduling and other things, so that the community is safe and the, and our employees are safe. So those are some of the numbers that are behind that as well, about four thousand dollars per week, so. Um, uh, any questions that you may have, and I would respectfully ask for authorization to go through January first, two thousand twenty-one?
Hey, thank you. So we'll start with council questions. We'll start with Councilmember Mann. Any questions for our city manager?
Uh, no questions. Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Thank you, Councilmember Sternquist?
Questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
Brian, how much did you save per week?
On, on average, it's about roughly about four thousand dollars.
That's it, thank you.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tem U, any questions?
Uh, no question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and I have no questions. So I'm gonna open up public comment. I'm gonna ask our city clerk if there are any public comment emails on this matter?
No, Mayor, there are no email public comments.
Do we have anybody on, from the public, uh, listening in?
No, Mayor.
Okay, I will now close public comment. Uh, any final council comments? Councilmember Mann?
Actually, just one quick clarification, because, um, Mr. Cook, you mentioned to January first, or was it January thirty-first?
Sorry, January thirty-first of two, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sternquist, any final comments?
No questions, sir. I think it's a great plan.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
Oh, that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem U?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, no particular comment, but just wanted to say that, um, th- these are essential tools for our city manager to run the city, to provide service, and things been doing well over the last few, uh, all throughout the pandemic. And thanks to the flexibility, and I think this is essential to maintain city services, so. I'm in support of that.
Thank you, and, and I concur, uh, you know, it's been very difficult, not only on, uh, management, but staff, and this is a, a good tool to have, and and it, it has worked for us. We are just still providing the services that our community needs, uh, and keeping our staff, uh, employed, so it's a, it's a good thing both ways, so. All right, uh, with that, I will entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that, uh, we authorize the city manager to continue with the temporary emergency action relating to the continuity of city services, and, um, approve the extension of, uh, admin leave for non-work hours during, uh, uh, this time, extending the period from December first, twenty twenty, to Jan- January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, thank you. That, uh, motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to item B, introduction and first reading of ordinance number twenty dash one zero five zero, approving the use of online or electronic filing of campaign statement and statements of economic interest. Uh, I believe, uh, Brian, is that going to be our city clerk who will be giving that report?
Yes, sir.
All right, okay, Madam Clerk, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Chavez, Mayor Pro Tem U, council members. The item before you tonight is a proposed ordinance that would allow required filers to use and the city to accept electronic filing of campaign reporting and statement of economic interest. Government Code eighty-four, six fifteen allows local government to require obligated filers to file statements, reports, or other documents online or electronically with this local filing officer. This code also authorized the city clerk to accept electronic filings in lieu of paper filing. In order for the city to use and accept electronic campaign filings, the council must first adopt an ordinance requiring findings approving the use of an electronic system, which will operate securely, effectively, and will not overly burden filers. The system must be available free of charge to filer and the public for viewing filings, and must include a procedure for filers to comply with the requirements that they sign their statement and report under penalty of perjury. In addition, before a city can begin implementing an all-electronic filing system, the Fair Political Practices Commission must review and approve the program to ensure it complies with prescribed security and transparency protocols. The proposed ordinance includes language that will allow filers to opt in or opt out of the electronic filing system, so that those without access to it or is unfamiliar with technology to file electronically can still submit their filing in paper form. There are many advantages to allowing electronic filing of disclosure documents. By shifting to an electronic system, the public can directly access most campaign statement and statement of economic interest. The system is also beneficial to the filers, as it can provide multiple reminders to ensure timely filing. It also stores previous statement for user ease and permit a single filing for multiple offices. The council is requested to consider adoption of ordinance number twenty dash one zero five zero to make the necessary findings and adopt regulations allowing for the electronic and paperless filing of campaign statement and economic disclosure statement. That concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, why don't we go ahead and start again with Councilmember Mann, if there are any questions for our city clerk?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sternquist?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscara?
Nope, pretty straightforward, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I just want to make sure, uh, uh, Madam Clerk, that you will still be available to help us with this, especially Fernando and I.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything electronic, you know, it's, uh, kind of scares us sometimes, but that's the, the new brave world out there. Everything is going electronic, obviously. Okay, um, let me start by asking, uh, our city clerk, if there are any public comment emails?
No, there are no email requests to speak.
Okay, and then if we have anybody on the line that would like to speak?
No, Mayor.
All right, so I'm gonna close public comment. Any final comments or questions by council members? Why don't we start with Mayor Pro Tem U?
Uh, no, no comments, uh, Mr. Mayor. I think it's very straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
No comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Uh, no further comments.
All right, thank you. Okay, I will then entertain a motion.
Uh, Mayor Chavez, I'll move to introduce for first read, a title only, and waive further reading of ordinance twenty dash ten fifty, approving the use of online or electronic filing of campaign statements and statement of economic interests, and to schedule the second reading of this ordinance for November seventeenth, twenty twenty.
That's it?
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second. If there is no objection, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could please take roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, if you could, uh, go ahead and read the ordinance title, please?
Really good. Ordinance number twenty dash one zero five zero, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temple City, adding Section two dash one dash eight to Chapter One, City Council, Title II Administration of the Temple City Municipal Code Regarding Electronic and Paper Methods of Filing Campaign Financial Disclosure Statements and the Statement of Economic Interest.
Hey, thank you very much. So, uh, we will now move on to item C, our city code enforcement resources. Uh, Mr. City Manager, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and members of the council. Uh, uh, in the second meeting of September, the, um, issue of the amount of code enforcement that is going on in the city was brought up. Um, and, and as the staff report lays out, um, this year's budget adoption, and as we continue to go through some very rigorous and thorough quarterly reports, required the city to look at all the, its vacant positions, and essentially not fund them. Uh, we made one adjustment recently with the planning manager and community development directors, flip flopping that funding and defunding of those positions. And, and since the adoption of the budget, we've actually, um, um, some other people voluntarily gone on to other positions, uh, moving on and up in their careers, uh, which has put several vacancies in place collectively. Uh, we've been cautious about this. Uh, this is not, as I think, I'm gonna borrow a phrase from Mayor Pro Tem U, this is not a sustainable path going forward from a stopping standpoint. But as this pandemic and its economic impacts are still playing out, um, we are taking a very cautious incremental role in looking at how we're backfilling positions. Um, one of those was the code enforcement position, and what we've, it's, is the building and code enforcement one position. I, I can tell you very straightforwardly that only having one code enforcement person in a city of our size is not sustainable. What happens when that person's not on vacation? Those kind of things, and that's true for several positions as well. Uh, we're making it work. Admin leave and other things are, are assisting in that process, but it, again, I'll borrowing, uh, prior, not my words, but apt words is it's not sustainable over time. So what, with the code enforcement position as well, we've struggled with that position over time with its classification. And we're gonna take this, we would take this time also to look at its classification, and maybe make it more of a traditional code enforcement position. The, the idea before was kind of to blend the code and building and safety components together, which in theory was a great, wonderful idea in trying to be efficient, trying to provide a broader way of services. We've been struggling, though, on the personnel front on that time, so. We are gonna come back to you a little earlier on a mid-year budget, and Ms. Pacaros is going to provide you with a preliminary mid-year, for lack of a better term, in the second meeting of January, and the full one in February, at which time we'll be able to at least do some uh, recommendations to the council as what positions we think we can bring back at what levels. I, I will tell you, one of my concerns is that on the field side, that is one challenging position that we have to make sure that we balance between how much work we're doing out in the field, the type of work that's being done, those types of things being evaluated. Um, the staff report has some statistics, as well as an option, if you feel that, um, you'd like some temporary work in between this time as well. Um, but if there's any other questions beyond what the staff report provided and what I just provided, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer those.
Hey, thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Mann. Any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions at this time, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Viscara?
Did I understand you correctly, Brian? Are, are you talking temporary here?
That is an option you could, you could consider. Um, I've talked to TransTech, and the, they could provide some temporary services. It, it's a little complicated for us operationally to provide that. I mean, it's not that we can't provide that, but we could. Um, but, and, um, there would be, TransTech is on contract with us to provide those temporary services as needed. Uh, so that, that would be one option the council could direct me to do. I just, it goes above my, um, budget authorization limit, so that's why that would be an action that I would have to ask the council to consider.
Yeah, the, the TransTech idea seemed a little pricey to me.
It is, it's, uh, good work is never cheap. Um, so, uh, yes, it's, it's, it, it is, it is a, it is a pricier longer term. It is a pricier short term. It provides some level of, uh, work in the field, but, uh, long term, that would be a pricier option.
So, the alternative is for us to hire temporary positions?
The alternative, the, all the alternative I'm presenting is, is either, uh, let's bring in a qualified person temporarily under our existing contract with TransTech, or what we're still recommending as staff is to wait till mid-year, see what we, see how we, see how financially we're, we're panning out. And, um, again, it's one of those positions where I can tell you now, having one code enforcement officer in a city in terms of backfilling and vacation is problematic. It's not optimal for a city of our size, but we'd like just to wait a couple more months to see where we land financially and have a better understanding of what this pandemic's economic impacts have been.
Is Viet still doing this?
Mr. Tran is one of our, um, he, he's actually, yes, he's a code enforcement inspector three position, Mr. Reimers. Is that, that's his, that's his classification, correct?
Uh, yes, a senior community preservation officer.
Thank you, senior community preservation, yes, so, yes, Mr. Mr. Tran is, is functioning in that role right now.
And, and he's the only one doing it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Pro Tem U, any questions?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, quick question, uh, Mr. City Manager, the, um, option to use TransTech at twenty-nine thousand dollars, two hundred fifty dollars, that, that is a, uh, a maximum budget. That is not something that would be spent necessarily, right? Uh, enough Uh, in other words, that temporary enforcement services would be called upon if there is a need.
Yeah, if, yeah, sure, we, that, that's what, yes, that would, if, if there is, there, if there, there is, there, you could describe, that's a, a little bit, sorry. Yes.
On call basis, right?
We would want to be able to train somebody because of, because diff, we, as, as our prior items showed, we take, uh, from a code enforcement standpoint, we take a little bit different approach than some cities. Some cities are extremely aggressive and just go, here's, you know, here's what the code says, we're going right to citation. We'd like to take a little bit of time to, um, and, uh, introduce and provide some orientation to those even temporary employees who assist us in this, in this field, so we take some time with that, but yeah, that would be, we wouldn't necessarily use that entire amount, but I wanted to be provided kind of a top end amount.
Alright, thank you. That's all.
Hey, um, let me ask a couple of questions based on your answer to Councilmember Viscara. You mentioned Viet Tran, who is now, he is not a, uh, building and code inspector one, is he?
Uh, I, that gets into a little bit of personnel issues, but, um, that's, there's, there's some separate classifications, and that's the classification, Mr., that, that individual's in.
Well, from what I understand, the report to say is that we had two building and code inspector ones, and then in May, we went from two to one. And so I'm just trying to figure out who that one is.
Alright, that's, 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 the, the, the report is not correct in that way, with two folk, two folks who performed code enforcement functions, not the same classification.
Okay, alright, that's why I was a little confused, okay?
Sorry about that.
Bottom line is that we have one person basically filling the role of building and code inspector, I guess, correct?
Not, in that general function, yes, different, different name of classification, but yes.
Right, okay. And, um, what exactly are the duties of the building and, and code inspector one?
They generally, they generally serve as a, what you would describe as a traditional code enforcement officer. So, um, we, several years ago, Mr. Remers, um, in his capacity as planning manager, Mr. Forbes came up with a reorganization to have some different layers and tiers of code enforcement slash building enforcement, code inspectors, to provide them, to give them the opportunity to have different levels of certification, so when building permits came out, depending on the level of sophistication and the level of, of complexity of the, of the building review, uh, would allow them to do those functions. Um, quite honestly, we've found that that's a little bit more complicated and a little bit more of a struggle than we can, so what, a long answer to your question is, what we have asked, and, and Mr. Mr. Tran does do some inspections as well, but with the fact that there's only one person in, in the function right now, he is primarily, that position, I should say, is primarily focused on, uh, code enforcement cases.
Would it be correct to say that one of the duties of the building and code enforcement, uh, would be to go out, for example, and check on holes that are stagnant and causing mosquitoes?
That would be one of the functions we would get, that we're, we're more reactive on that. We don't necessarily go out and check on those, I think it was mentioned before, but that would be one, that would be one that, that position would, uh, go out and inspect and potentially issue warnings and fight citations.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we started in the past, we used to have someone actually driving around the city, being a little bit more proactive, looking for such things as code enforcement violations, but it appears that we really no longer have the staff to do that, is that correct?
We are taking, I, that's, that's correct, we are, we are more reactive than we are, um, proactive in terms of code enforcement activity.
And how do you anticipate TransTech's work to compare to, for example, having our own employee do these things? Is it comparable, or, and who, are they gonna be taking direction from us? Or do they do their own thing as they see? I mean, I'm not quite sure how that works in this regard.
That would work no different than the way TransTech works with us now in terms of the building official, uh, and, and building inspectors who report either to me or Mr. Remers, either on job sites or inspections. So, um, while they are contractors, they're, they're, they are, are contractor, they still report to us. We have to be careful about the employee employer relationship issue with that, but in terms of their specific immediate job or, or task duties, I would call them, uh, the tasks, those tasks they take direct, they take from the city.
And if, if we were to go, if we were to go that route, would you anticipate that TransTech would assign a certain individual to stay with us for the next few months, or would they send different people? I mean, how, how is that going, how is that gonna work, do you know?
In the past, what we've done, when we've used TransTech to fill in some positions on a even shorter period of time, we asked for consistency in, in one person providing that service to us.
Yeah, we think that that would make more sense.
Tom?
Okay, go ahead. Yes, Fernando?
I was just gonna say, I've had some experience with that, and, and typically the contractor will hire one person, and, uh, he'll be assigned to the city and ta, primarily take direction from the city, but he's ultimately responsible to, to the, uh, to the contractor, because that's who's paying him. But the, the, the thing I was wondering, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Is, 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 is Tran involved with, with, with the ongoing, uh, inspections of new construction and additions and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, we have a building inspector position that, um, another gentleman, Mr. Reed, who, who deals with that on a day-to-day basis.
Okay, the, the way it was described, seemed like he, he was responsible for that also. I didn't think he was trained to do that. Anyway.
No, uh, the, yeah, no, it's, we have another individual on staff, Mr. Reed, who is, deals with inspections on a day-to-day basis and has throughout the pandemic, he's, he's, uh, been doing a good job out there and making sure all of our inspections are done in a timely manner.
So, so Viet's primarily involved with code enforcement then, right?
Yeah, that, that position, that role, yes, is, is primarily code enforcement.
Thank you.
Can I add something, just, um?
Go ahead, Mr. Remers.
Sure, Viet has taken on himself to go out and get a residential building inspector certification, um, which was a huge step for him and, um, has really become an asset for the city. Uh, from time to time, uh, Mr. Reed might have too many inspections or might not be available, and Viet has been able to assist in that matter, and so, so that's been helpful. So, I just want to let the council know about that.
Very good.
Thank you for that. Alright, uh, why don't I go ahead and open up public comment? I'm gonna ask the city clerk to check for any public comment emails, if, or any?
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
Alright, and do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak at this time?
There are no public callers.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment, and, uh, we'll finish with any final council comments or questions. I'll start with Councilmember Mann.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, I think in summary, I would say I concur with staff's recommendation to uh, evaluate this issue at mid-year budget review. Uh, one of the key things that stood out to me within the staff report is that, uh, it says staff would like to uh, return with a potential position to this classification during the mid-year budget review. Um, and so if there are some tweaks that staff feels like would be more optimal to service the needs of our city with respect to not just code enforcement, but also building inspection, um, whether we're tweaking that to better accommodate the current situation or future situation, I would kind of like to see what staff's evaluation of that is. Since the pandemic is still ongoing, um, even though six months ago, we thought we'd be out of it by now, uh, I, I just feel in general, also the decision, um, not to say that code enforcement is not important, I think that's, that's always been something we pride ourselves in Temple City, is, is making, keeping our neighborhoods looking good and safe. Um, but I just think for some folks might be going through economic hardships or other things like that, um, probably the last thing they want to deal with is a, a code enforcement issue. Um, granted, if it's endangering public life or is of a public safety concern, obviously that's different, but I'm just speaking in probably more broad generalities. Uh, I think it's an issue that I wait for further discussion during mid-year budget review. So, in other words, um, I don't even think it's necessary to bring in TransTech part-time. That's all.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Sternquist?
Um, yeah, I have a little bit of a, a different thought process. I'm, I, I think Tom and Fernando, you were on board and, um, Vince was, and I think it was, we worked really, really hard to go from a city that was more proactive than reactive with code enforcement. And I feel that when you only have one in code enforcement officer, that's really all you can focus on. Um, we don't have the time to have this employee, or he doesn't have the time to, you know, go out and be a little bit more proactive. Um, you know, I, I think we've learned a lot from our community-based policing where we really worked with our, uh, sheriffs to get to know the community, be out and about in the community, and I think that that's the relationship I would like to see with our code enforcement officers. And I think it's very difficult when you only have one person to rely on, because that person is just going to be reactive, um, replying to citizens' complaints. Oftentimes, it's a neighbor that turns in another neighbor about doing something illegal or, you know, converting a garage or, or whatever the case may be. So, my idea would be to have someone from TransTech come in the interim period of time until we figure this all out, and actually use the thirty-two thousand dollars savings that we probably will have from not spending on crossguards this year, and use that monies to, um, put towards a code enforcement, um, support person to help Viet. I, I just feel really strongly that we worked really hard to be a more proactive, um, you know, have our code enforcement people, know the community, know the people, and I don't think they have, he has the time to do that. It's just, you know, go check it out if there's a citation that needs to be given. He probably doesn't even have time to interact with the people. But that's just my thought. I mean, I, I think it's worth investing in, uh, even a part-time person with TransTech, if, is, was this part-time, I can't recall, or full-time with TransTech, as far as hours went, Brian?
Uh, it is roughly about thirty hours a week.
About thirty hours a week. I, I, I just think that's a great support. I think that, I think we need it, but, um, other than that, that's it.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Viscara?
Would a TransTech person been doing, be doing actual code enforcement? I, I would think they'd be more involved in construction.
We would gear this person towards, uh, we would gear the person towards code enforcement, not, not building inspection.
And now, I'm not hearing what the preference is on the part of you and staff. Do, do you want to hire somebody, or do you want to do a, a sub contract?
So, uh, as we kind of indicated before, with all of the vacancies that we have, we'd like to look at the vacancies in their totality when we hit the mid-year budget. But again, if in the interim, between now and the mid-year, in late Jan, mid to late, mid to late January, early February, if you wish to provide, we wish to give us authorization to provide some supplementary services, TransTech would be able to provide somebody very quickly to us to provide, uh, interim services for the next fifteen weeks or so.
So that combination is, is a preferred solution?
If that, if that's the, that's, that's the direction of the council, yes. We would like, we would like time to, we would like time to look at the vacancies a little bit longer, um, but if, again, if the council feels as though there, there is some interim, uh, support is needed, or we, we've already contracted, we've already contacted TransTech and can get somebody on pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Mayor Protam Yu, any final comments?
Um, I think that, um, things are doing well in the city. I don't necessarily think that we, we need to immediately bring on a full-time staff that is option B, uh, provided by staff, but however, um, having one person, and like the Mr. City Manager was saying, um, time off, sick leave and all that, it could be an issue. So I'm, I'm, I'm for providing at least authorizing the initial budget to bring somebody on if necessary, but really more of an on-call as needed basis. Until, until, I'm, Mr. City Manager can, can bring back a recommendation at mid-year.
Hey, thank you. Um, I, I really believe that code enforcement is a very, very important, is very, very important to us and in managing our community. Uh, as, uh, Councilmember, uh, Sternquist mentioned earlier, um, we, we really took this, uh, three hundred and sixty degrees a number of years ago, when we went from being merely reactive to proactive. And, uh, it really made a difference in the community, I think, and in a lot of different ways. Um, it certainly affects the quality of life, there's no question about that. And, um, you know, for a number of reasons, through no one's real fault, I don't think, we have now gone from a proactive to a reactive. Um, and I, I just don't think that works very well. Uh, one of the things that it tends to do is it tends to pit neighbor against neighbor, which is never a good thing. Because now all of a sudden, we're relying on one neighbor to really throw their other neighbor under the bus, so to speak, and say, hey, they're not doing something right. But it really isn't their job to do that. Uh, certainly, we, we like to respond to complaints that sometimes we're not aware of, but yeah, you know, I think it's incumbent upon the city to really flesh out those types of things. And, uh, we just don't, for whatever reason, have the staff to do that. Um, at some point, and I completely understand the economics of it, and, uh, but sooner or later, not filling these positions is going to back up on us and is going to, um, you know, make a difference. And so, and I think this is one of those areas. I think code enforcement works hand-in-hand with our sheriff and keeping our city safe and keeping it well-maintained, things that we're very proud of in Temple City that we've come to be accustomed to and our, and our residents do too. I can tell you that, and I'm sure many of you, uh, get the same, most of the complaints or most of the issues that I take from people in the community have to do with code enforcement. I can't tell you how many times I have called Brian or sent him a text asking him to check on something because somebody has informed me about it. Uh, and other, other than that, we would not have probably even known about, at least not right away. Uh, so, uh, you know, I, I really think it's an important part of our, our governance and, uh, something that we need to keep on top of. So, and I understand with the budget issues and everything else that, that come about, giving Brian the time to flush this out, to determine what is the best thing to do, but I think for the time being, we need to at least put some type of, uh, stopgap into what we do. For the time being, we need to at least put some type of, uh, stopgap into what we do. One person is just not enough. And then that one person is stretched thin as it is. And so I would, I would probably be in, well, I know I would be in favor of, uh, some temporary code enforcement services. If TransTech can provide those to us, I think it'd be money well spent. So. Uh, with that, uh, are there any further comments or questions? If not, then I will entertain a motion. Mr. Murphy, did you want to add something?
Not I, sir.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I don't have the agenda thing at my page, but I'll make a motion to, um. Have our city manager reach out to TransTech and, um, hire someone not to exceed thirty hours. To be a support person or as many hours as we might need them.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Basically, the motion is, uh, to, um. We're giving direction to the, to Mr. Cook to, uh, look into, uh. Hiring TransTech to provide additional code enforcement services, uh, in an amount. Uh, not to exceed thirty hours. I know that there's been a, a mention of mo- money in the, uh. In the report. I don't know, Mr. Murphy, do we need to, uh, add that to there? I think it might not be a bad idea. To maybe, uh, if you don't mind, uh, Councilmember Sternquist, maybe to amend that motion to include the services not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, I'll make that amendment. Yes, of course.
All right, and, uh, who had the second?
I do.
Fernando.
Okay, all right. Mr. Murphy, is that clear enough?
Just want to be clear, sir, the, um, and, uh, Councilmember Sternquist. If the maximum thirty hours was a, a per-week maximum, not a total maximum, um.
Right, okay, so thirty hours per week. The total not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
There you go. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, you?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that. And rolling right along, we're going to now move to. Item eleven, update from our city manager, Mr. Cook.
Mayor Chavez, the members of the council, since there's nothing going on in the world right now, I'll, I'll provide a very long city manager's report now. But here's a couple of things to highlight. Mr. Matsumoto, can you give a quick, brief update on, uh. On, uh, what happened this weekend with Halloween?
Yes, uh, definitely. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So, uh, this weekend on Halloween on September or October thirty-first. Um, we transitioned to a drive-through event at Live Oak Park. Uh, we actually had a fantastic turnout, uh, much larger than we would have anticipated. Um, in total, the Public Safety Supervisor Brian Arizumi. Had confirmed that, uh, at its height, the line for the drive-through was, uh, just about a mile long. Um, it stretched from Boge down Baldwin, uh, down Olive, um, over by our Mayor Protem, uh, Vincent Hughes house, uh, uh, off of Palme. So, um, the line was handled extremely well by our Public Safety, um, officers. Uh, they kept everything nice and orderly. And, uh, over the course of the evening, we handed out about ten thousand bags of candy. Uh, we estimated well over a thousand cars. Uh, came through the event. Um, other than a few minor hiccups with cars trying to, uh, bypass the full line. Um, it was a very smoothly and safely run event. Uh, we received a lot of positive feedback, both on the day of the event. As well as, um, messages on social media and even a note that was posted on the annex, uh. Thanking the, uh, the city for, for still keeping, um, Halloween alive in, in Temple City. So. Um, overall, we were really excited with the event and, uh, we hope that this is another springboard for our holiday activities that we have coming up in December.
Thank you, Mr. Matsumoto. Great job by you, staff and the entire team. Uh, Mr. Zeme, our social media team, everybody, great work. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did anybody claim those bicycles we contributed from the Kiwanis yet? We put golden. We put golden tickets in a couple of the bags. So if a kid got it, he would win a, a new bicycle.
Yes, uh, thank you.
I was wondering what that golden ticket was. I just threw it away. No, I'm just kidding.
Um, we, uh, I was planning on, we've been coordinating with a, a Kiwanian, uh, Cindy Vance, uh, for that giveaway by Kiwanis. So Kiwanis provided two, uh, bicycles for, uh, participants, which were set up as Councilmember, uh, Viscara had mentioned as a golden ticket. Uh, so two of those went out, but I haven't, uh, yet coordinated with Cindy to see if, um, those have been claimed or not. So. Uh, hopefully I'll be able to include that as part of the, uh, weekly update this week, uh, once I connect with Cindy.
I, I talked to her yesterday. Nobody's come forward.
Okay.
So I don't know what the next step is. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Here.
Yes, go ahead, Cindy.
Uh, I just wanted to, um, share with Adam that I've heard nothing but great things and, um. One of my tenants, Sean, is a, I forget his last name, Haw- Hawkins, I believe, his. He's a member of CERT and he was telling me that they. Got a phone call and said if they wanted to come and help and he was thrilled to be able to go out and help. So he said if there's anything coming up to. Please reach out to the CERT members because they want to be used and they don't want to be just used when it's. Uncomfortable and there's an emergency. So anytime they're available for us. So I think it was a great event. Thank you so much, Adam.
Great work.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple more quick things. I would like to introduce on the line with us is actually Lieutenant Frank Ruiz. Um, if you remember when we were seeing each other in person, our Monday morning, seven AM, uh, law enforcement meetings, um, Lieutenant Ruiz would be there. Uh, with Captain Flores's retirement and, uh. Extended vacation, Captain, Lieutenant Ruiz will be the acting captain for Temple Station, serving. Us and five other cities in the incorporated areas around, uh, the Temple Station jurisdiction. Uh. Uh, Lieutenant Ruiz has been with the department for thirty years. He is serves as the operations lieutenant. And has served as the operations lieutenant for the Temple Station for several years now. So, uh, the, Frank, you want to say a quick hello? There.
I, I just like I say that, uh, you know, it was kind of unexpected for, uh, Captain Flores to start taking time and before his retirement in March, but. Um, uh, I'm here to step in and, um, I'm going to continue the great service and that great relationship we have with Temple City. And, uh, I don't expect any bumps in the road. So, uh, anything, if you have any questions or, uh, comments for me, just let me know, I'm available.
Okay, uh, well, thank you very much, Lieutenant. We look forward to working with you. Uh. I think we all know you and we've all gotten used to you and, uh, look forward to working you with, with you even closer in the future. So. Thank you for stepping up and, uh, and we'll see you soon. Thank you. All right.
All right, thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Um, two more quick things, two more quick things. There were several local elections. Uh, one of which is Measure J, uh, with the county. Um, we will be working and trying to understand what those impacts are. The Sheriff's Department has. Uh, spoken about what some of those impacts could potentially be as well. So we will be monitoring that very closely over the next few months. Um, lastly, I would just like to say thank you to the council. Um, we are nine months into this pandemic. Um, and, uh, your support, you giving both me and the staff the resources. In order to work our way through this pandemic, be it staggered scheduling, admin leave. And, and, and the countless other things that we've done in the last few months, um. Some of the local elections around us were very contentious and I, you have to believe COVID, it doesn't help the situation. And I appreciate your steady leadership. I appreciate you giving us the support to do. And carry out your policies and programs for this community. So thank you. Uh, you're, you're very kind to thank us. Uh, so often, so on behalf of myself and the staff, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's it, sir.
Thank you. All right, uh, number twelve, update from our city attorney. Mr. Murphy, have you got anything for us today?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to touch on three things, all of them very quickly and all of them having to do with ethics. Um, the first, the Fair Political Practices Commission has put out a new rule. Regarding what we call the public generally exception. That, as you may remember, uh, is what happens when you would normally have a conflict of interest. But the item in front of you, uh, or in front of the council affects a significant portion of the community such that you're still allowed to participate. The firm and in particular, uh, one of our associates, Christina Burrows. Reviewed the heck out of it and gave me a memo to give to you. Uh, and the memo was so long and confusing that I thought it really wasn't worth giving it to you. Instead, we just ask you to keep coming to us if you think you have a conflict. And now we may know how to help you get out of having a conflict because this is after all an exception. So keep doing your job and we'll try and, uh, resolve it, it for you and, and let you participate, even if you think you might not be able to. The second item, also involving the FPPC. Uh, you may have heard they entered into a settlement with LA County and the Howard Jarvis Taxpayer Committee, uh, group. Regarding the county's, um, use of funds, uh, with respect to a couple of measures. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, including Measure H. Uh, the Jarvis Group alleged that the county had been, uh, essentially too argumentative, uh, too. Uh, trying to make the case, uh, in too compelling a fashion. And so they overstepped bounds in terms of spending public funds, uh, that they were not just informing, but were actually taking a side. In dealing with those measures. Uh, the details of the settlement are hugely important for us. The dollar figures were, were much larger than we would ever see in Temple City. Uh, but what is important is to note that, uh, the FPPC said that they will be looking into all kinds of local measures. Uh, this is something they want to keep an eye on. So. We've reviewed, uh, again, uh, FPPC Regulation eighteen four twenty point one. And we'll be sure that whenever we have a measure or if there's a measure that, uh, another entity wants us to back, that we'll be, um. Making our informational material truly informational and not argumentative and. Uh, don't want the city to get in trouble in that regard. Uh, the final item, the League of California Cities issued yesterday. Uh, a fifty-six-page handbook called Practicing Ethics for City Attorneys. Uh, I'll have it read by the end of Friday, um, and it's, uh, really an update of a handbook that they put out every few years. I think though I'm going to pass it on to you. Not that it's hugely important for you, but it does have some information that you might find interesting in terms of. Um, how we as a group of city attorneys across the state view the role of representing the city. Uh, view our interactions with you as individual council members, with the council as a whole. Uh, what our duties are, what we're supposed to stay away from. Um, you know, as, as has been said tonight, we all have enough going on in our lives. So I understand if you just delete it, but. I thought I'd send it on to you if you wanted to page through. Uh, thank you all very much and hope you have a great rest of the week.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Murphy, and I'm, I'm sure those new rules are probably as a follow-up to, some of you may know that. Uh, the, the codes of ethics were revised for the very first time in many, many years for all attorneys in the state of California. A couple of years ago, and so we all got a chance to, um, to learn our new rules of ethics and. I even now have the chance of, chance to teach them in my class. So, uh, pretty much the same, but a little bit different. So. Thank you for that. All right, so, uh, we will now move on to item thirteen, council, excuse me. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. I know that, uh. Um, Mayor Protem, you and I, uh, did have an audit standing committee. Mayor Protem, did you want to report out on that or do you want me to?
Um, uh, yeah, I can report out and please add that when I'm done. Um, so on October twenty-third. The audit standing committee met. Um, just to remind everybody. The audit, uh, standing committee was formed a number of years ago. At the time when the city of Bell was, uh, got, got, uh, it was a recommendation by the civic grand jury. Is best practice for city finance. So we've been doing this for a number of years. So. Um, so ten days ago, we met, um, with, um, the city, the city manager. Um. And, um, Director Paragas and also, um. Roger Alfaro, partner of Eddie Bailey LLP, uh, auditing firm. And, uh, we had a great, um, discussion on the entrance conference, um. Looking ahead to the audit for the year ending June thirty, twenty twenty. Um, along with that, I, I, I just want to, um. Uh, mention something that not only the, the, the conference went very well and we got good review from the firm. And I think it's also important that we mentioned that in October, we also received. A note, notice from the, um. Government, Government Finance Officers Association telling us that our, our city again. Uh, eight years in a row and won the certificate of achievement for excellence. So. So I, I think it's a testimony to how well the staff been doing. Thanks to, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and, and Director Paragas.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, just a couple of, a couple of things to add that, uh, they have started the fieldwork. Uh, and, uh, we anticipate getting the, uh, reports probably early December. Uh, one side note, this is the last year of our agreement, uh, with the firm that has been with us for a number of years. And we will be going out with an RFP, um, as a follow-up as required by law. But, uh. Yeah, I just want to echo, uh, this remark. The staff has done an excellent job. We're obviously award-winning, uh, work that has been done. And especially nowadays, uh, with everything that's going on, I think that even carries, uh, more weight. So, uh. I know Ms. Paragas is online with us and certainly, uh, I want to thank you and please, please pass our. Thanks on to your staff and all the help that you have and, uh, good luck on the audit. Okay, um, anybody else have a, uh, a report? Any others committee meetings that have been taking place? I didn't, I don't think so. So, okay, well, now move on to item fourteen. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And why don't we start with Councilmember Viscara? Do you have anything that you would like to add tonight?
Um, well, I was going to talk about Halloween, but we did that, so.
You can still talk about Halloween. You can tell us what you dressed up as, uh, maybe or, uh.
No, we were just glad to be involved and, uh.
Thank you Kiwanis for doing that, yes.
We enjoyed the kids. That was about it. Other than that, we had a very peaceful night at home here for change.
Yeah, I don't think there were too many people out there trick-or-treating. At least I didn't see too many people on the streets, uh, this year. And, uh, just so you know, the line did slow down quite a bit to look at those bikes or look at the bike. We were very interested in, in it. So that was a good thing. All right, Councilmember Mann, any, any final thoughts?
Yeah, I know we've been going through all the election. Uh, I do want to just, uh, congratulate the. Board members from the Temple City Unified School District who, uh. Are, I guess, one of them is Board Member Mary Sneed and the two other incumbents, Melissa Espinoza and Matt Smith. I just want to congratulate them and look forward to working with them, especially since, uh, over the course of the last year. We've kind of resurrected a lot of the relationships with the school board. Um, and looking forward to meeting them officially. Well, two of them are already on there, you remember. So it'll be a exciting partnership for us to work on. That's all.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, um, with that, piggyback on William, um, yeah.
Yes, and also congratulations to all three of them. And I'd just like to thank Ken Nolenberg also for his time on the school board. I know he very much enjoyed it and we wish him the best also. I do have a question and I don't, and a suggestion, and I don't know how, if we can do this, but there have been quite a few and I think Captain or Lieutenant Ruiz is still on the line. Recently, I have spent a lot of time on near Primrose and Woodruff and the apartment that we have been renovating, it abuts the alleyway there. And so there have been numerous sheriffs with people that have climbed over or actually made a hole into the fence into where the new park is being built. And I'm wondering if on the alleyway there, if it's possible to remove the green, whatever that material is that kind of goes through the chain link fence because you cannot see into the area. And I know when homes are being built, they do that a lot because they don't want to show what the building supplies are. But since we're maintaining just a, you know, an area of vegetation, if you will, and the city is, you know, making sure that that is level, it seems like it would be less of a problem if that green material was removed so that homeless people, some, there's been, the sheriffs have been there quite a bit. So I'm just wondering if down the alleyway, it might be a good idea if we can to be able to look into the park so that people aren't sleeping in there, they're not camping out. I don't know, Brian, what, what your thoughts might be on that, but it might help somewhat. I think on Primrose, since there's so many cars, people aren't likely to try and get into the area from that street.
We can remove the green, we can, if green fencing is a bit faded anyways, we can go ahead. We're getting closer anyways, but we can, we can take a look at, at the fencing. I just want to make sure from a code perspective, we're okay. The only, the only issue is that the, that the fencing does provide mitigation against dust that's in that area at times as well. That's, that's, that's usually the purpose of that green fencing. But what we'll do is we'll talk with our building official and see if there's some alternatives we can look at to see if we can improve the visibility.
I think that will help our sheriffs also, so to not spend so much time with calls going out there. And then since we have the crest that's open and that's on the other side there, it's just probably better to have that space where people can look into and see that things are okay in the park. So I appreciate that. I want to thank our mayor also. I saw a picture of Tom handing out candy at the Halloween parade. And I know Fernando, you were involved. I don't know if any of the other council members were. I was able to go out to my sisters and drive through and get to see the twins and the family kids. But I did see your picture, Tom, and thank you for taking the time to do that.
You're welcome. I was, I was dressed in my favorite costume, Sandy Koufax of the Dodgers.
And that's it. Thank you again, Adam, and welcome, Captain Ruiz. And that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, you?
Acting captain, acting captain.
We don't want to get, we don't want to get in trouble.
Okay.
Vince?
I would echo out the welcome, Acting Captain Louis. Looking forward to working with you. And, and that's all.
Gosh, thanks, sir.
Thank you. All right. I just have a couple of quick things, just a really quick overview. I know we've talked about the Halloween event and, and of course, give a big shout out to Director Matsumoto and his staff. They couldn't have done a better job, really. I mean, I was so impressed by how smooth everything went. And actually, the two, a couple of times when people tried to butt into line, those were actually kind of exciting times, actually. I thought it kind of added a little flavor to the night, but nobody really got upset. I mean, it was handled very well by staff. And I'll tell you, one of the neat things as the cars drove through, the kids were actually in costumes. I mean, and they had their little, their little bags that they held out, they held out for the, for the candy. I mean, it was just, it was just awesome. I mean, it was just a, a great event. I think everybody had a great time. And, and I'll be honest, and they, and I know, I know Adam mentioned how long the line was. When people got up to the, finally where they were going to get the candy, some of them had already been in line for an hour and a half. And you know what? They were all in a great mood. Nobody complained. They were so thankful. And, and not only were they, we given, they were giving away candy, of course, but the decorations, I mean, it was just a really nice setup, the way they had everything set up. And, and you know, it's one of those kind of things where you're so proud of it, but I think we all hope we never have to do it again. Okay. You know, so who knows? But at least we know we can do it. So great event and great job by everyone. Couple of kind of sad things, I guess you could say. Tonight is Jillian's last meeting. I think some of you know that Jillian is going to be leaving to move on to a new part of her career. Okay. And I know she won't, she won't show us on her camera, but that's okay. I see you there, Jillian. We know you're there, hopefully. Okay. But you know, I just want to say, there she is. Okay.
There she is.
I know most of us remember Jillian's humble beginnings as a parking enforcement officer for the city of Temple City.
You gave me a ticket.
Yeah, I always remember, and we, and whenever we saw Jillian, she was always in a uniform, right? And then I remember we had like a city event, I forget, and she showed up in like a dress and it's like, who is that? You know, you didn't recognize her. I mean, you know, who is this beautiful lady, you know? And it was just, I mean, you know, and I can't say enough about what Jillian has done. And, and you know, going from a parking enforcement officer to where she is today. I mean, it's just a testament to, to the great things and the hard work that she has done. And you're most deserving of everything. And you know, we're going to miss you, but we know that, you know, life goes on and, and you have to make decisions that are best for you. And we wish you nothing but the best. I can't thank you, of course, how much you've done for the youth committee. I know they're not, they're going to miss you as well. I mean, we're all going to miss you. And I just want to take this opportunity on behalf of, of the, of the council and the city to say thank you so much for all that you've done and, and best wishes. And, and don't forget, you, you, you still have a lot of friends there and you're more than welcome to, to come back and say hi. Okay. So, so be safe. And, and you know, we'll, hopefully we'll see you soon. Okay. So, and I want to end this evening on a, on a kind of a sour, not a sour note, but a sad note. We lost two members of our Temple City community since our last meeting. Some of you may not be aware that Marie Leonard passed away. I don't know if some of you are familiar with Marie. Marie is actually Tom McAtee's longtime girlfriend. I'm sure you all seen her at events with Tom. Whenever Tom would be at the events, she would always be there with them. Unfortunately, Marie passed away. And so of course, our, our best wishes go out to her family and, you know, may she rest in peace. And, and of course, our prayers are with Tom as well. In addition to Marie, we also lost, of course, and I'm sure all of you know, Josette Temple. Okay. And hopefully sooner than later, we'll be able to put together a, a, a nice ceremony or a way of honoring, you know, her memory. You know, Josette, we all knew her. She was at a lot of events, certainly had a lot to do with the Camellia Festival, the Historical Society, the Women's Club. She was always around town, always made it a point to, to participate in, in city events and just a really nice lady. And I, I think, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think she's the last surviving member of the Temple family. Is that right?
That's my understanding that I would.
No, she doesn't have any children. She hasn't, she had no children. And so, you know, obviously that's a, that's a big part of our community. And, you know, last surviving member of our founding father. And so, you know, we certainly have lost a great woman and, you know, may she rest in peace as well. So tonight, if you don't mind, I'm going to close tonight's meeting in, in both her honor and Marie's honor and recognize what great people both of them were. So. Okay. With that, we will now move on to item 16. We're going to recess to our successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. Okay. And I will now call to order the, the meeting. And Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Agency Member Mann?
Here.
Agency Member Sternquist? Agency Member Viscar?
Here.
Vice Chair Yu?
Here.
Chair Chavez?
Here. Okay. Item number three, our consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I moved to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second without objection. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Agency Member Mann?
Yes.
Agency Member Sternquist?
Yes.
Agency Member Viscar?
Here.
Vice Chair Yu?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Yes. Okay. Number four, unfinished business, none. New business, none. Communications, none. I will now open up public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any email public comments?
No, Chair.
Any, anyone on the line?
No callers.
Okay. So I'm going to close public comments. Now move on to item eight, update from Executive Director and Agency Counsel.
None tonight.
None, none tonight. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any matters from the agency members?
None.
Hearing none, I will now adjourn this meeting and will return to our regular council meeting to item number 16, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have any email requests to speak at this time, Madam Clerk?
No, Mayor.
And do we have anyone on the line wishing to speak?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will close public comments. And we are to the end of our evening. And of course, as stated earlier, in honor of the lives of Marie Leonard and Josette Temple, I'd like to close this meeting in their memory. And ladies and gentlemen, we are now adjourned. Everyone stay safe, stay healthy, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez.
Take care.
Have a good night, everyone.